21, Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Eleven are present and voting. Alder Steyer is excused.
Thank you. Please now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
As Clerk Jeffrey said, Alder Steyer has been excused tonight, but it was his turn for the invocation, and he has invited Jen Schmo to offer the invocation for him this evening. So really glad to have Jen with us tonight. By way of introduction, Jen resides in District 10. She presently serves as the Community Development Director for the Green Bay Community Church. And over time, Jen has integrally involved with, has been integrally involved with issues of poverty, homelessness, job creation, and affordable housing in the Green Bay area, most notably with Circles Green Bay. Along with Alder Steyer, Jen is spearheading the creation of a neighborhood association in the Helen Keller School area. So thanks so much for all that work, Jen, and thanks for being here tonight with us all.
Thank you, Mayor, for that excellent introduction. Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, for this day, thank you for the opportunity to gather in freedom. Thank you for all of the leadership gathered here today to make decisions that will bring our community closer, that will build community, and bring us more joy and opportunity to enjoy life. Pray all these things in your precious name. Thank you. Amen.
Thanks again, Jen.
Thank you.
On to approval of the minutes.
Motion moved.
Second. We have a motion made, but seconded by Alder Stevens, and that is to approve the minutes from both the meeting of March 30, 2021, and April 1, 2021. Any revisions? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? You guys have it. The minutes have been approved. Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve the agenda that was seconded by Alder LaFave. Any changes? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The agenda has been approved. Report by the mayor. Just a couple items tonight. One that's on the agenda and one that's not. I'll start with the one that is not. I know many of you oftentimes attend meetings of the RDA, and so just wanted to flag something that was handled at our most recent RDA meeting, and that is the acceptance of $500,000 and 25.5 acres from JBS. Very excited about that development. You know, a lot of the details are yet to be worked out, but at a high level, we're hoping to make possible an urban farm, a destination playground, and a mixed-use development with an emphasis on housing and hopefully some commercial and community space. Just want, as I said, flagged that because it's not coming directly to the agenda, but if and when we move forward with those park improvements or the infrastructural improvements that will be necessary for that property, of course, you will all have a say in how that's doled out and targeted. So wanted to highlight that for you all because I think it's something worth celebrating, but also to let you know that it will be coming to our common council if and when we need to make those decisions about those park improvements, infrastructure, and the like. Also, just wanted to highlight some items from our Economic Development Authority report. We don't oftentimes highlight what's going on at the EDA, but, you know, many times doing good work, and I think this is a great example of what's moving through the authority. The first item is commercial real estate market study. Nothing too shocking in there, but I think definitely worth review for all of council just to get a handle on what the market looks like in the city of Green Bay and surrounding communities. And then also, the following two items kind of related to one another. There's the Shared Corridor Vision Report, and then the allocation of some TID funds for Parklets. This is a project that I want to thank Matt Buchanan for his work on, first and foremost. Did a great job from Community and Economic Development, bringing tool design firm together with On Broadway and Downtown Green Bay to articulate a pretty exciting vision, I think, for our downtown Washington streets and Broadway as well. You know, cars are inevitably part of the equation, you know, when you're talking about transportation and how people move around, especially in the city of Green Bay. But when we think about the future of our downtown, I think it really has to be pedestrian first and creating spaces that are open and welcoming and safe for pedestrians and cyclists and people with disabilities and people from the ages of eight to 80 to be able to move around safely is really, really important and great for economic development. As we come out of this pandemic, you know, that's certainly the way that I'm going to look at things with regard to our downtown, and excited that the EDA has approved that port as well as some additional funds for our Parklets, which I think are a really big piece of that plan. So with that, we'll move on to the remainder of the agenda and announcements from council. Mayor. Alder Burnett, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let Clerk Jeffries know that Alder Steyer is attempting to sign into the meeting, so just be on the lookout for him.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Very good. Thanks, Alder. Announcements. All right, seeing no other announcements. We'll move on to appointments.
Motion to reappoint.
We have a motion to approve those reappointments made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf, I believe. Any discussion on those reappointments?
Mr. Mayor.
Alder LaFave, go ahead.
I just want to say something about Cheryl Renner-Wig. I think I'm glad that she is staying on, and I think we are lucky to have her. I've known her from other things, and she's a very valuable employee. Thank you.
Agreed completely. Thanks, Alder, for those comments. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and those reappointments are made. Under ordinance, a second reading for adoption.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion has been made to suspend the rules and take up these items with one rule called vote. Motion was made by Alder Scannell and seconded by Alder LaFave. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? You guys have it. The rules are suspended.
To adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. Any discussion? All right. We will use the board.
Your vote has started. Thank you.
And those are adopted, 11-0. On to the report of Redevelopment Authority.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alder Scannell has made a motion to approve, seconded by Alder Gerlach. That's approval of the report of the Redevelopment Authority from April 13, 2021. Any items here to be handled separately?
Two.
Item two. Any others? All right, item two will be handled separately. Hearing others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? You guys have it. The report has been approved, the exception of item two.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. The item was pulled by Alder Johnson. Alder, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two amendments that I'd like to propose, and I'd like to offer them separately. And just as a heads up, I did communicate with Assistant Director Cheryl Renier-Wig, and I believe she shared this with Director Neil Stechelte, and we mutually agreed upon this language. So it would just be putting it before council and hopefully securing their support. The first amendment that I want to offer is, under the section Developer Requirements, item number one states equity in the form of the value of property less any mortgages thereon or any other equitable accessible to the RDA, not less than 20% equity available for injection into the project. I would like to add a statement after that that says, "In circumstances where the developer is unable to meet the 20% equity requirement, supplemental equity may be provided through this program at no more than 10% of the project's value. The terms of this equity position will be negotiated by staff approved by the RDA and City Council and may include ownership, GAAP financing, or other types of uncommitted collateral. Supplemental equity is not a project grant." So I would, that is a formal motion to amend that.
Okay, we have an amendment that's been offered. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Alder Scannell.
And just some additional clarity, Mayor. The purpose of that is, in instances where we have a developer, a 20% equity position, we are saying that this program would have the ability to serve as a GAAP. So this program could provide up to 10%, and the city could either do it in the form of a loan, or we could take an equity position in the project, and then the terms of how the developer ultimately would be negotiated and put in the form of an agreement before City Council. But this gives us the ability to shrink that equity requirement so that if we have, you know, someone who needs that help to bring a project to market, we can do that.
Very good. Discussion, Alder Dorf.
Hi, I just would like to ask Director Stechelte for his opinion on this amendment, and I think it's a positive opinion, but I'd like to hear why.
Yeah, obviously, Alder, our first staff's first position on this was try to make that 20% consistent with other financial policies and programs that we have at the city, so that's where the 20% does come from in terms of evaluating the project specifically. You know, we certainly wanted to try to hold this as a position where, you know, this is not meant to be the full financing of a project. We want the developer obviously to have as much skin in the game as possible. So we presented a more specific, a little bit, just a tougher standard than what Alder Johnson has amended, but the difference is, you know, staff is certainly acceptable with that, but we wanted to make sure that that was something that could be approved by council. So anything within that 20% and underneath was essentially been approved as part of this policy, but that we were acceptable with going for that if it was a position that simply could be presented to the RDA and City Council for approval. So with that extra control of having you guys essentially as the approving entity beyond the 20%, or, you know, to change that, staff is comfortable with the amendment.
Great. Thanks, Director. Alder Dorf.
I'm not uncomfortable with it, but I am wondering if it should go to RDA first, or is this time-sensitive? I feel a little uncomfortable about not having had this at RDA. Or Alder Johnson, did you talk about it then? I can't remember.
I did not talk about it at the time because I hadn't had an opportunity to thoroughly review the agreement, but this has been before RDA, and this is the recommendation. You know, this document was recommended to full City Council, and it's now incumbent on City Council to adopt RDA's recommendation or amend it as necessary, I think, very similarly to what we do with other documents.
Thank you.
Director Stechelte.
Again, I think Alder, I think the main point is that obviously we're comfortable that the control still, in order to basically enact that provision, it would require still RDA and council review. So again, that's why staff was comfortable with the amendment.
I'm comfortable with it then. Thank you.
Thank you both. Further comments on the amendment? Alda Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to make sure I'm understanding this exactly right. So when a developer comes to the city of Green Bay with a project, if we approve this without changes, they would require to have 20% equity into the project before we would give approval. With this change, someone could come to us and say, "I can get 10% equity, and I've got a piece of property down the road that's valued at this, and I've got this much equity in that, and I can put that up against that." Is that what's going on here? Or am I not understanding this?
Alder Johnson?
Sure, sure. Essentially, the intent, Alda Galvin, is for a developer that's not able to secure 20%, we are providing an opportunity to close that gap by utilizing the funds in this program. The reason I want to do this is because 20% is pretty standard of any project, but if our objective and goal is to put shovels in the ground, I think we ought to be trying to change the standard because the standard isn't working, right? We have an incredible housing shortage right now, and so this is really trying to say, and those rare, and this probably really is, in those rare circumstances where a developer can't close that gap, this gives us a tool to help close that gap, to get a shovel in the ground.
Okay, that explains a little bit better, and I'm getting, I'm just, as I am playing devil's advocate, I look at the project out on University Avenue. That apartment complex that was supposed to happen, it got started, and it's been dead in the water for about a year and a half, going on two years. What would happen to the city? What would be the impact on the city in this program if we had given them 10% equity in that? If we own 10% of the equity in that, would it make it easier for us to make the project move forward or to take it over? Or would we end up suffering a loss here?
Mayor, if I could on that?
Yeah, Alda.
I think the details of that agreement to date by City Council have only been discussed in closed session, and so I would recommend that we not go into drawing those examples. Now that said, in this particular instance, and I would speak just to this particular program, I think we have, it can either be by way of a loan, or we can actually become for property, and there could be other options as well, but I think it makes it easy for us because we would likely take second position in any type of agreement, depending on what else is involved in that capital stack. But we're not just going to give 10% without having the ability to stick our claws into something. I mean, that's just kind of standard due diligence.
Right. I appreciate you reminding me about the closed session before I misspoke and got myself in a jam. And I appreciate you and I have had this discussion, kickstart more development in this community, and it would serve not only the taxpayers but the citizens and everything else a lot to have more development going on. So I guess I'm just, so you feel, and I guess I would ask our director, if he feels that if we were to do this, it would indeed then give us more control and allow us to maybe bail out some of these or get some of these programs that maybe stalled to get them going and reach an end date, where they can open up and start being productive. Is that right?
Mayor, if I could. Absolutely, Alder. I think the idea is certainly not only, I think Alder Johnson is saying, so in exchange for allowing some additional consideration for that equity position, the city would pretty much require additional qualifications in order for them to, for that project to essentially, you know, move forward with our additional participation financially in that case. Like I said, whether that's a right of first refusal on the property, whether that's an option to purchase for a certain amount of time, whether that's an additional collateralized position somehow, personal guarantees, any tool that we would have available to us to essentially enhance and protect the city's position would be justified, in my opinion, by us moving the needle and providing that additional investment to this program. So this isn't just someone coming in and saying, "Hey, I can't make the 20%. I can do 10%. Can I just do 10%?" And we just say, "Okay." We would probably require additional security in order to kind of compensate for that flexibility.
All right. Thank you, and I appreciate your patience with my questions. Thanks much.
Good question, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alda Vanderleest, go ahead.
20% is not a, most loans, if you're looking to get a loan from a bank, they want to see 20% that you have some skin in the game. I understand what you're trying to do, but does the city have a lot of extra funds available that they can be? You know, 10% is a pretty light amount as far as if you're going to start a project. 10% is very light. You know, if you want to have somebody that's got good financial backing, you better have the money. In other words, the way cost overrun today, you know, housing, any type of development, it's probably jumped up 10 or 15% of what it was from, I would say, I would say 20% it's jumped up from the last two years on construction costs. So I think that, you know, you'd have to very, look very closely at your developer in the bag if they, you know, you get into a, you know, a project. I'd like to know where the money's going to come from. In other words, if we're down on 10% of the project, where would the money come from?
The funds would be allocated, Alder, from this, the housing fund that we're talking about in terms of the additional TIF funds, but it does, by obviously contributing additional funds for a particular project, prevents that money from obviously going to other projects. So there's certainly a limited amount of funds in the Affordable Housing Fund that's been created from this. I would see, you know, going beyond the 20% being a rare request, and the occasion when we actually do get that request certainly being, I think we're in a higher level of essentially documentation and justification as to why that would be okay in terms of whether it's a sound business plan, whether that's additional options to refinance later on to do something different with that. It's also why we really are requiring that, you know, anything underneath that, that's essentially an approval either by staff or through RDA. That's also why we feel, if we feel we've got a good enough project that has made the case for us, that that needs to go back through not just staff but also RDA and council to say, "Look, this is why we want to move this project forward, just only 10%. Here's our justification. Why?"
Do we have any of these projects, in other words, in the works right now as far as they have come forward? Is it necessary to jump into this right now, or do we want to wait and see and bring it back later as far as this request, as far as, you know, change in the agreement, the amendment here?
I think, well, certainly, there's always, anytime there's, we've had discussions, and obviously this has been on the agenda, we have had inquiries about the fund and what might be available. Again, this is not our only funding source that we have available to do that. We regularly use TIF funds. We use CDBG funds. We use, you know, a variety of funding to kind of help these sorts of projects, Alder. So it's a matter of, you know, I think, I think the 20% is still the standard in this, and even with the amendment, I think 20% is still the standard that we're looking for in most projects. So I think, again, if someone would have to make a pretty strong case to get a staff recommendation to go different from that 20%, and then we also would still require that process again from both the RDA and from council. So there's a lot of folks who would need to be comfortable with it to go below 20%. So again, with those extra review steps that are in place, Alder, I think staff is okay with that, with the amendment.
Thank you for your information.
Thanks, Alder. Any further discussion on that amendment? We do have a second. So seeing no other comments, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The amendment is adopted. Alder Johnson, you had another amendment?
And this is under the section titled Project Limitations. It is the last bullet point that says $500,000, meaning that that would be the maximum incentive available. At that sentence, I would add this additional amendment. "Under certain circumstances, project incentives in excess of $500,000 for large-scale multifamily developments that add additional qualifying units above and beyond the scope of a standard project may be considered and will need RDA and City Council approval." And that is a formal amendment proposal.
Second.
Amendment has been offered by Alder Johnson and seconded by Alder Scannell.
Quick explanation if I could on that, Mayor. You know, I think obviously the whole point of this program is to build units. We all know that. Five, I mean, Alda Vanderleest alluded to this, you know, project costs right now are 10, 15, 20%. I would even argue they're more like 30, 40%. And so when you start to look at $500,000, sadly, in today's building climate, it's not a lot. An average cost to construct a normal unit on some of these buildings that are going up, probably around $2.25, $230,000. So if you want to get a unit that's at, say, 75% of the average rental rate, you're going to need to provide an incentive, and developers need to close that gap. And so if they're going to create, let's say, 100-unit development, you need more than $500,000 to close that gap if we're going to get to the low-income qualifying units that we're looking for that are a requirement of this TID extension. So this gives us the ability to grant more than $500,000 for larger-scale developments.
All right, we do have an amendment and a second. Any questions or comments on that amendment?
Mayor?
Yes, Assistant Director Renier-Wig.
I would just like to add, in our discussions, Alder Johnson as well, we were, I think the intent, let me back up. Usually, these large-scale affordable housing projects are part of a tax credit project as well, right? Low-income housing tax credits. So there's a layer of financing that happens with these larger projects. I think the intent for this in excess of $500,000 was really meant if we get a very large development, let's say 250 units, 300 units, 500 units, then we may be talking about a larger need for that gap increase in there. I know you, I mentioned, Alder Johnson, 100 units. I don't, I don't think I would look at 100 units because usually they can fill that gap with a half a million, but I think if you're talking large, large-scale units, that's when we would look at maybe upping that 500,000. And that would be, of course, we'd have to take that to RDA and council for a large project like that.
Yeah, and I think my intent is not to define it and leave that ability between staff and the developer to negotiate that. But I think at the end of the day, it's about, when you look at this fund, how can we create the most number of units possible, right? I mean, that's the goal, and I think staff can, is certainly more than capable of figuring out what that number looks like.
Great. Any further discussion?
Could we use the board on that, Mayor?
Yep, we have a request to use the board, and we will do so. This is on Alder Johnson's second amendment.
May vote.
Mayor?
Yes, Alder Steyer.
Alder Steyer, yeah, I finally got into the meeting. I'll vote yes.
Okay, thanks, Alder. And that is 11 to 1. That amendment is adopted. I entertain a motion to adopt as amended.
I'll move to adopt as amended.
Second.
Motion has been made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell to adopt as amended. Any final discussion?
Just one comment, Mayor. I'd really like to commend staff. This was a communication that I had put in when we first passed this, and staff did a really great job. Those are just a couple of things that obviously I wanted to see modified, but that means that 99% of what they put together was exactly as I envisioned it, so kudos to staff. Wonderful job.
Absolutely. It's an important policy. Alda Gerlach.
And I was just going to say that I really appreciate the creative thinking of Alder Johnson. I really appreciate that he looks at these things carefully and thinks creatively. So good job to the whole team, including Alder Johnson.
Thank you, Alder. Any other comments? All right, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? You guys have it? That item has been approved. On to INS.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax, and that is to approve the report of the Improvement Services Committee from April 14, 2021. Any items under this report to handle separately? Hearing none. All in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? You guys have it? The report has been approved. Protection and Policy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens, and that is to approve the report of the Protection Policy Committee from April 12, 2021. Any items here to be handled separately? Seeing none. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? You guys have it? Report has been adopted. Granting operator licenses.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Vanderleest. Any names here to be handled separately or any abstentions? Seeing none. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay. The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Plan Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax, and that is for the report of the Plan Commission from April 12. Any items here to be handled separately?
Item one.
Item one. Alder Corpus Dax is your cat. Want to hold any items?
No, I think he's good.
Okay. Item one, any others? All right. Item one will be handled separately, hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. The ayes have it, the report has been approved with the exception of item one. Your wish is here.
I would, oh.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. That item was pulled by Alder Dorff. Alder, you have the floor.
I would like to open the floor for one of my constituents who would like to speak to this item. So this time I make a motion to open the floor.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made to open the floor by Alder Dorff, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it, the floor is open. Sir, just please state your name and address and then move forward with your testimony.
Certainly, we are Patrick and Barbara Ryan. We live at 341 Crosswinds Lane. Our backyard is on the west side of this development, that which is proposed to be rezoned from rural residential to residential one. We have documented our, our opposition to this development in, in letters dated earlier to the Plan Commission, February 22nd and March 18th, and we still stand by those statements. We moved to this address two years ago after living and paying taxes for 40 years on the east side of Green Bay at other addresses. We have found this to be an idyllic setting with the Woods 12th Fairway in our backyard. We, we enjoyed the green space, the wildlife, the panorama of sentinel trees, all of which change as the seasons change. And in, in the winter, there are always parades of kids and parents going to a sledding hill just off the 11th Fairway. This address was supposed to be our retirement residence. This proposed development has changed all of this. We realize that the woods is private property and we have enjoyed the, it provides, but our property and others in Crosswinds changed forever. No green space, no wildlife, trees, and the loss of recreational resources for all ages. We have suggested in meetings called by the Woods and with the Plan Commission that an aesthetic barrier or at least a few trees be placed between the properties on Crosswinds Lane in this development, but, but no avail. We, there are also stormwater drainage issues which, which are now, which now affect the properties, several properties along Crosswinds Lane. We currently are uncertain as to, as to how this situation will, will change in the future with this development. We don't look forward to the dirt and noise, heavy construction traffic over the next few years on these residential streets. It's by kids on bikes and by dog walkers. The closest recreational alternative will now be McCullough Park, nearly a mile away and across a very busy Huron Road. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Close the floor.
Second.
Motion to close the floor made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorff. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it, the floor is closed. Alder Dorff?
Thank you. I have heard from the concerns of, of the neighbors and I do understand how they're feeling about losing something that was aesthetically very pleasing to them. And I also understand that this is private property and in our plan development, it was always going to become residential at some point. And at this point, the operator of the woods can no longer afford to have an 18-hole golf course. I believe it's going to be 12 or 13 holes, I'm not sure exactly. So he did sell this portion that was in our, our plan, our city plan, and so this, this is going to happen. And I do empathize with the loss of, of the aesthetics and the enjoyment that they had. And I'm hoping perhaps the wildlife will not all go away and I know that the city's talking about a, possibly a conservancy later on in the agenda as part of the property. So that may be helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Other comments from council? Alder LaFave?
Thank you, Alder Dorff, for bringing that up about a conservancy, which I think would help somewhat. Actually, you know, the woods were part of the golf course, it sounds like, will still be there, so it's just a portion. So then I think that'd be a good discussion to start talking about a conservancy and making some concessions to the neighbors. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, we have a motion to approve on the floor. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay. The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. Finance Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorff, and that is on the finance, report of the Finance Committee from April 13, 2021. Any items here to be handled separately?
Item one, please.
Item one will be handled separately. Any others? All right. Hearing none, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it, the report has been approved with the exception of item one.
Move to approve.
Second.
And this is a receive and place on file item.
Oh, move to receive and place on file.
Made by Alder Scannell.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Dorff. Alder Brunet, you have the floor.
Yes, quite simply, I just want to make a motion to refer to staff to determine the cost of conducting an outside investigation by an outside human resource department.
That motion has been made to refer to staff by Alder Brunet. I think it was seconded by Alder Weary.
Yep.
Any further discussion on that, Alder Brunet?
No, I think it's self-explanatory. I don't think a city should conduct an investigation on itself, so I, I would like to determine how much the cost would be for an outside investigation and go from there.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Gerlach?
Just a question, does that then amend this from receive and place on file to refer to staff? Is that what hap, what that is, an amendment? Yeah. Okay.
Well, yeah, that's a good question. I mean, I think it's a, it's a motion to refer the item back to committee, so it's not, it's not an amendment.
Okay.
It's actually a refer to staff, so it'd be a superseding motion.
Oh, thank you.
Alder Dorff?
I mean, I would be opposed to it, as I was in the Finance Committee, that there is, there is really nothing to refer to staff. Finance Committee had a thorough discussion of this and I'm sure we'll take this up in Personnel Committee as well. And I would be against the motion to refer this and have staff work on something for which it has not been established that there's even a need for an investigation. So I'm going to be voting no on this.
Thanks, Alder. Further discussion?
Just want a board vote, Mayor. Thank you.
Alder Vanderleest, was that your request? As well?
It was Alder Brunet's request.
Okay, yeah, I saw your box light up, so I didn't know if you were trying to say something as well.
I, I do have one question, Mr. Mayor.
Alder Weary?
If, thank you. If, if staff or, or if the chairperson would have the answer. If this was discussed at great length, what is the estimate for such an outside investigation?
What, what was that question?
I heard that it was discussed at great length, so what, what was the estimate? What was the expected cost for an outside investigation?
I think Alder Dorff was referring to committee discussion, but Alder Dorff?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, of course, we moved to receive and place on file and not have staff get into this. This was a communication that was to Finance, we discussed it in Finance and we.
So we don't, so we don't know. Okay, so we don't know. Thank you.
Well, that's why he was probably asking for that motion. Right, we don't know.
Okay, it'd be good to know. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any further discussion? All right, the motion is to refer this item to staff to determine the cost. Request has been made to use the board and we will do that.
Thank you, Mayor. You may vote, Alders.
Mayor, this is Alder Stoyer.
Alder Stoyer? Go ahead. And that vote is six to six. I am abstaining from this item, so that fails. So the motion on the floor is receive and place on file. All in favor will signify by saying, Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'll be voting against that. I, we should vote that down and then vote approve it, given the magnitude of this issue that's been looked at around the city and around the state. I, I think an outside investigation is more than warranted, so I think we should vote no on this and then yes for the investigation.
Any further comments? All right, the motion is to receive and place on file.
If we could board it, please.
The request has been made to use the board.
Mayor, I vote no. Alder Stoyer.
Thank you, Alder. Alders, you may vote.
Celeste, you could switch. I hit the wrong button too quickly. So I am a no.
Too late, too late.
Thank you, Alder Weary, I did do that.
Thank you. Please make ways.
And that item is approved seven to five, or rather received and placed on file. We are on to Park Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Weary. And that is to approve our committee from April 14, 2021. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay. The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Personnel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any items here to be handled separately?
Number three, please.
Item number three. Any others? Item three will be handled separately, hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it, the report has been approved with the exception of item three.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
Motion to receive and place on file made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder LaFave. The item was pulled by Alder Brunet, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I guess a question for Director Folds or Attorney Chavez. Can you tell us, has there ever been a situation where the city of Green Bay had an outside human resource department or professional investigate something in regards to personnel of the city of Green Bay?
Yeah, that's occurred before. It's typically done prior to a final report being given out.
Could you explain the circumstances of those past cases?
Typically, it's just individuals feel like there's a conflict of interest or maybe they thought there was potential bias, so they ask the staff to have an outsider look at it. Usually, all the ones I've been involved with, staff has been involved to a certain extent with picking the attorney to investigate and also give assistance where it was needed.
In your tenure as human resource director, has that happened?
Yes.
Who would, who would request that? Would it be a city council member? Would it be the city, current or past city employee who felt that an outside investigation would be warranted? How can that be triggered?
It can be triggered, I think, from staff. It could be triggered from the HR department, city attorney's department, employee, an outside entity, it could be a council member. There's multiple people who could, could ask for it. And it's not always just granted, but I think it's typically, it's just, I guess a number of people could ask for it.
So my request is not out of line considering the past history of the city?
No, the, the only, I mean, concern I have is that, you know, this was discussed at a council meeting and, you know, out of closed session, there was a 12-all vote, 12-0 vote to move forward. So at this point, what you're asking for is, for what we'd recommend would be an attorney to do an independent review and then give an attorney-client report to the common council. That would not be public information, but would review the city's liability going forward versus maybe what was, I think some people have asked, like a independent investigation, providing the results to the public. That would not occur. This would be looking at the city's liability and that would be presented to the common council, but it really wouldn't change the outcome of what has, has already been put out in my report.
You offered a lot of information that I wasn't asking for, so I, I don't mean that in a disrespectful way, but I didn't ask for that information. I guess I was just asking for, was what I was requesting out of line based on past city experiences? Ask you one more, a couple more questions, but specific. The last, give me an example of one or two times where the city did consult with an outside attorney or human resource department. Can you give a little more detail as to why that was determined to be a valid request?
No, because it's a personnel issue and I guess I'm not going to get into the weeds of, of those because I think that's between the employee and, and the organization. I wouldn't feel comfortable disclosing why that would be, why that would happen.
Okay, so again, I'm not going to disclose anything we discussed in closed session, obviously. But that closed session discussion, the report of the former clerk was counsel four hours before the council meeting. Many of us had just, you know, read it an hour before the meeting or during the meeting, perhaps. I don't know if that's true. But it's certainly possible. Could, at the committee meeting, I, I said, let's remove the personalities. Let's remove the people who hold the positions, but the positions themselves. You basically have an outgoing city clerk who had an accusation, in her words, of a hostile work environment, and it included the position of the mayor. You were the human resource, pardon me for saying that, the human resource department director, conducted the investigation, but that position reports directly to the mayor's office. Could you see how that would be determined to be a conflict of interest?
Alder Brunet, I guess it's, it's difficult for me to answer that question because a lot of that was discussed in closed session. And the rationale that I can give kind of puts me in a bind because it's a personnel matter and there's also, you know, potentially pending litigation from the former employee. So I explained kind of the rationale behind, you know, what happened. You know, I feel comfortable with my report and how that came about, so I can't really give that information or give any more detail because there's, like I said, and it's pending litigation, so I apologize, but in open session, I just, I can't really disclose why I feel comfortable that there is not a conflict of interest in this situation.
And Director Folds, I understand. And again, as I said in the committee and my private correspondence with you, it's not meant to be any disrespect to you. It's to protect and preserve the good governance of the city, that we prevent our city employees of being in a position of a conflict of interest if we can avoid it. And I think in this situation, we certainly can avoid it. I'd like to make a motion to have the human resource department consult with an outside human resource department or attorney to conduct an independent investigation.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded by Alder Weary, made by Brunet, seconded by Alder Weary. Alder Dorff?
Yes, I'd like to point out that this very, basically two and three-quarter page report was prior to city council and was thoroughly discussed in closed session. We made a determination at that time, a 12-0 determination, that we accepted the report. The word complaint was never used. Any of that, I'm not revealing anything we talked about in closed sessions since a complaint was never made. So there is, it would make absolutely no sense to me that we would look at something that we've already said months ago. We were satisfied with it, we approved it, we moved on. It's time for us to, again, move on and not keep bringing the same things over and over again to see if we can get the answer that we want. And I don't mean that disrespectfully, but this is, to me, what seems to be happening. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Further comments? Alder Lefave?
Also, I think you got to think about the former clerk. He wants more drag on this, too. I think you got to think of her, too. I think she's moved on. She's gotten another good position. And we haven't heard anything. And I think, I think, yeah, as Alder Dorf mentioned, let's move on. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I don't think anyone should speculate on what the former clerk wants or does not want, and just leave it at that. We should not be guessing at what Chris Teskey might want. This is a hot-button issue, obviously, because of everything that's swirling around it. I think we should remove any appearance of any impropriety of investigating ourselves. If there's nothing wrong, and I'm sure the outside council is going to just confirm that, and then we can show the public, see, it's been double-checked. So I really don't see why we're afraid of doing this. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell?
It's not a matter of fear. It's a matter of good governance and expenditures and finance, money. I don't, I really am confused about the orders that are pushing this. When we discussed this in closed session and went ahead 12-0, that would have been the time to bring up these objections and concerns. We can't really discuss them openly now, but to my satisfaction, what we discussed in closed session, there's not I don't know why Alders are now saying there's a concern. Where? What? Of course, we can't talk about it, but that, when we were in closed sessions, when that should have happened, and it didn't. And so now you're talking about, I just find that all very confusing, because outside agencies and people have created this big blather over nothing? We got to react to that? No, no way. I'm quite satisfied with what we discussed and decided to do in closed session, and now it's time to put it all to bed. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Dorf, for a second time?
Thank you. I would just like to say that I think what the citizens of this city need is a city council that makes it clear that we stand behind our employees, that we stand behind the actions that we take as a city council, that we have taken as a city council, and we aren't constantly trying to undermine and certainly be disrespectful to some of our employees. So in response to what the city needs, that's what I think the city needs. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Burnett, for a second time?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. That's a loaded comment, Alder Dorf, because the city needs our city employees to be able to conduct the duties of their positions without possible interference. I'm not saying that's what happened here, but there are indications that may have happened. In the same way, we wouldn't expect, you know, certain city officials to get too deeply involved in the office of police chief or the office of fire chief. We certainly don't want the position of a city official to get too deeply involved with a city clerk position carrying out the duties of her position. The open records request, no matter if they're pleasant or not pleasant to some people, they are out there, and it may indicate that there were situations where the outgoing city clerk felt very uncomfortable while carrying out the duties of her position. All I'm asserting here is that it is not appropriate for the Human Resource Director position to conduct the investigation if that person went into the office of mayor. So it's true, we need our city employees to know that the city council and the city of Green Bay government has their back in good times and in bad times. There's a situation where a city employee felt very uncomfortable while carrying out their duties. Dependently elected body of city government, the city council has a duty to make sure that any investigations into such claims are done properly without any conflict of interest, whether actual or perceived. I would argue that this is an actual conflict of interest. At the very minimum, a perceived conflict of interest. So I agree with you, Alder Dorf. We need our city employees to know we have confidence in them. That includes doing what needs to be done when things don't always go as planned. So I'm very comfortable with what what I'm bringing forward. There was a long history of why the previous city clerk left the office, left the position. I did engage the Human Resource Department and the City Attorney's Office at length about this very very obvious conflict of interest. I don't think I was given the proper responses, in my opinion. I attempted to get an outside attorney-client privileged opinion. I couldn't say the exact reasons why, because I wanted to protect the city liability and I wanted to respect our city employees. The city, the city committee and then the city council voted me down on that. It's like, gosh darn it. All of that. We have to, we have to do what's in the best interest of our government and our employees. That's why my motion is completely appropriate, and I'm willing to defend that at length. If you want me to, you want me to write my own report, I will certainly do that. I have enough to believe that an outside investigation should be conducted. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell, for a second time?
Yeah, again, I'm tired of saying this and being ignored. Yes, our former clerk felt uncomfortable. That's a given. That's obvious. We know why I discussed that in closed session. And in closed session, everyone understood that, everyone agreed with it, and everyone voted 12-0 to go on. And I have no idea why this is happening now with Alders taking this position. You flip-flopped, and you haven't explained yourselves. You haven't explained that why it was okay with before, and we all voted 12-0, and we all heard in closed session the reasons and accepted that. It makes no sense to me. I keep asking that. I've asked that at least four or five times now, maybe six and a half. I don't know. But it just keeps getting snowballed over. You say you've got, well, that's enough. I'm done.
Thanks, Alder. Any final comments? All right, we do have a motion, motion been made by Alder Burnett, seconded by Alder Weary to pursue an outside review here, and a request has been made to use the board, so we will do that.
You may vote, Alders.
Celestine, I pushed the wrong button. It's to receive, wait, we are voting on?
The motion is by Alder Burnett
Okay.
to pursue an outside review.
Okay, then I did it right. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Alder Steyer?
Uh, I'm a yes.
Thank you.
And that motion fails seven to five. We do have a motion on the floor to receive and place on file. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay?
No.
You guys have it? And that item has been received and placed on file. EDA?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens, and that is on the report of the Economic Development Authority from April 5, 2021. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? You guys have it. That report has been approved. Received and placed on file.
Received and placed on file.
Second.
Motion has been made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Lefave, to receive and place on file the building permit report for March 2021 and the municipal court report for March 2021. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay? You guys have it. That has been received and placed on file. Now, we are on to resolutions.
Motion to suspend the rules.
And I'm imagining we would
Yeah, for one through five.
All right, motion has been made to suspend the rules and take up items one through five with one roll call vote. A motion was made by Alder Scannell, and it was seconded by Alder Dorf. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? You guys have it. The rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt those resolutions made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. Any discussion? We will use the board.
You Alders, you may vote.
Mayor, Alder Steyer, I'm an aye. Yes.
Thanks, Alder. And those are adopted 11 to one. Alder Vanderlyce, you wanted to be opposed there, just to confirm?
No, I don't. Not on that one, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that was then unanimous, Clerk Jeffries?
For one through five?
Yep.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Alder. I will change that.
Okay, thank you, Clerk. And then before we get into U6, just to kind of read the tea leaves, based on, you know, some thoughts of Alders. We just wanted to hold this resolution over, given the lateness of of the report that Attorney Chavez put together for us, and for good reason. You know, it was not produced until this morning. But was wondering if Alders wanted to hold that over, so that the full council and members of the public had the opportunity to go through the report.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, second.
Okay, I believe Alder Scannell made the motion to hold this item over to and that was seconded by Alder Dorf. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? You guys have it, and that item has been, um, ordinance is first reading.
Motion to to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion has been made to suspend the rules. Take up these items with one roll call vote. That, or that motion, rather, was their door. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? You guys have it. The rules are suspended.
Motion to advance.
Second.
Motion to advance made by Alder Scannell Dorf. Any discussion? All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? You guys have it, and those ordinances have been advanced to a second reading. Committee of the whole, we do have a couple items here. I would make the same suggestion to council, again, given the timing of our report.
I move that we hold this, the committee of the whole items until the May 4 meeting.
Second.
Motion has been made to hold this report over until the next council, the door, seconded by Alder Galvin. A discussion?
Yep, I do have a question.
Alder Weary, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think it's wise to to hold it so that we can all digest the report. And if we could, please include the status of testifying before the state legislature, when we expect that and who will be testifying. And then, secondly, the status of the recent Wisconsin Election Commission complaint that was filed by several Green Bay citizens. I think that could also be discussed at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any other comments? Alder Burnett?
Yeah, I think the motion to hold so the public has a chance to review it, has the decision, though, from a procedural standpoint, if have questions, does the city attorney prefer to have us email the questions or ask the questions during open session at our next council meeting?
Attorney Chavez?
That's entirely up to the council's preference. You could always send me messages, and I'm more than happy to respond. But it's also within your right to ask questions during council meetings. That's what those are for.
Yeah, sure. Thank you for that. The latter, I knew, the former, the reason I asked that is if if we do have questions, if there's a common theme of questions, do Attorney Chavez just write up a quick response to that to add to the public record before we discuss at our next meeting?
I can definitely try to. I would say that at this point, the report is complete, though, and so I don't know what else. I mean, I'm happy to to respond to any requests you have, but as far as the report goes, the report is considered final. That's why it's released at this point.
Okay, I guess one quick question. The Razors, I believe their names are pronounced Razor, but it's spelled R-O-E-S-E-R. Did you or someone from the city attorney's office reach out to them for comment, or was it just the comments that are in your report, is that just what you assertained from discussing with witnesses other than them?
For that portion of it, we reviewed the testimony that they provided, and then I spoke to the employees who had interactions with them.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. All right, we do have a motion and a second.
Mayor?
Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a question for Attorney Chavez. And for the, I do support the hold as well, and I appreciate and understand why. Of course, we received this today, and I'm only about halfway through the report, so definitely support the hold. But one question I did have, because it's not apparent to me thus far, was Michael Spitzer Rubenstein, was he interred for the purposes of this report?
Yes.
Okay, so his his opinions and observations are reflected within it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alder.
And I will, I will tell you that anybody I spoke to externally, before I included any information from them, I also spoke to our employees to confirm their version of events coincided.
Thanks, Attorney Chavez. Anything final? Seeing none, all in favor of holding these, this report over will signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? You guys have it. The report is held. Petitions and communications?
I have two.
All right, Alder Weary, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two. The first one is protection and policy. Request by Brent Farre for the city of Green Bay to support via resolution the 2021-22 Wisconsin State Legislature bipartisan Senate Bill 243 and Assembly Bill 245. That basically lowers the threshold for disabled veterans to claim a credit on their property taxes. And the second one, improvement and service committee. How can the city of Green Bay achieve an annual 3% replacement rate of its roads? The action plan would include anticipated increased borrowing requests.
Thanks, Alder. Any others? Seeing no others, Alder Stevens?
Yes, there's a little housekeeping we need to do. Many of, you know that our chief is retiring on May 3, and actually, tonight is his last common council meeting with us. I know he was on here earlier. I don't know if he's still on, but I just wanted to give a shout-out to him to tell him thank you for his five years of service to the city of Green Bay. The three years that I've dealt with him, it's been great, so thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
There's Commander Warwick. He'll maybe let let the chief know.
Yeah, I've seen. I'll pass it on. He had to step out, so I'll make sure he knows all that and the support in the well wishes going forward.
Appreciate that, Commander Warwick. Thank you. Thank you, Alder Stevens, for the comments. A few of us had the opportunity to do a little bit of a send-off on Monday, where the chief attended his his final swearing-in of some new officers. But we are absolutely going to miss Chief Smith. He's accomplished some amazing things in his five years here, and and I think all of us owe him a huge debt of gratitude for his service to our community, so appreciate you, Alder Stevens, for for calling that out. I'll entertain, I will entertain a motion to refer.
Motion to refer.
Second.
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 Motion to refer those communications made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Steyer. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? You guys have it. Those communications are referred.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 You guys have it. We're out of here. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Chris, do you know? Hey, Chris, do you know?